Let's open the official book of knowledge. It's all blank pages.
Do you have enough room here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, don't worry. I'd just push everything that way if I did. All right, so. The other annual inspection of the fire extinguishers by Centas and emergency lights were in good shape. I did add them, add a second extinguisher to the library. I felt one wasn't... I mean, it'd be nice to have two, be a little bit better coverage because as he says, fire extinguishers are really made to get you out of the building for the most part. So I felt a second one wouldn't hurt there. Kenny's truck wasn't here. It was down at ATG. So I had him just give me another new ten pounder, which then I'll put in Kenny's truck, take the one that's in there out, mark out of service. But then eventually it'll give us a spare that we can rotate.
Can you explain the ten pounder, what that?
So the ten pound fire extinguisher is a small one.
Okay, okay. But they do it by like the weight of the actual extinguisher?
That's how they...
The usual one you see hanging in somebody's kitchen is this big around and this tall. That's considered a two and a half pounder. A five pounder is this big and this tall. A ten pounder is this big and this tall approximately.
Yeah. And then they judge, I mean Stuart knows this, by like in a building, they'll say, oh no, you should have a twenty pound or whatever. Like in the town garage, we actually have the ones that are rated for grease fires, gas fires, and so on and so forth. So it's nice. They come in, they inspect everything. They run ninety minute tests on all the emergency lights. Anything that doesn't do it, they always have the parts on hand. It's been, I think it's their third year. And it's just been a really good, good company. I'm really surprised. You just usually don't find them out there. All right, uh, I'm trying to get with Joe and Ray from Walker to talk about what can be done with the ARPA money, that we have to do whatever we have to do with it. So it's a little tough nailing them down this time of year, as you can imagine. But I'll keep pestering.
I thought we were talking about like replacing the windows that have fallen out and stuff.
Yeah, but the original price they had given us was way more than what... So I need to, and the other thing is, is you should be aware, as Al knows and I know, building materials are suffering increases every day. So that's the other thing I want to kind of chat with them is how far out will they hold the price? Because if their schedule doesn't allow them to say, come in until the fall, it's really a waste of time to go over shit.
So should we do a part of the building?
That's probably what it's gonna have to be.
And maybe do the front and as many windows as we can and then leave the back for another year.
I leave them up to that, you know, to them because they'll know what's the best route to go to get as many done as possible with what they have.
Is it, I mean, it's such a huge job. It's a big amount of money. Is it something we need to put an RFP out for?
So here's, here's the thing, Julie, and I agree, RFPs and our policy and all that. The work that I had to have done on the Forbay Town Garage, I had out every single year for an RFP twice a year for probably three years prior to COVID. And then once that was over, it went through again. And then finally I hooked up with Walker Industries. You can do it. I can tell you how it's gonna go. You're not gonna get anything and we're gonna just keep pushing back. I mean, I pretty much resigned myself that Ray Reed and Company is the people I use because when I call, they come. I mean, yeah, you can do RFP.
I mean, it's just that it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I spent almost close to three hundred thousand with them last year.
Did they do the library and the community center?
They did the community center, the library, the Forbay. You know, I mean, I have no problem going out doing RFP. Just realize that it's...
Did we bid out the library and the community center?
No, because I had, I had knocked them in. I had already, I had already sent out six, seven, eight RFPs.
Right.
I could not even get one single person. I went and talked to companies personally that didn't have nothing to do with it. And I told them at that point, you're looking at probably when all said and done, half million dollars worth of work. They didn't want nothing to do with it. I couldn't get anybody, not one single person or company to even come look at what I had going on. So when it went out the last time, I went to listen and I said, this is ridiculous. This shit's never gonna get done at this rate. So then I got a conversation with Ray Reed, one of, one of the partners in Walker Industries. He's like, well, let me come look at what you got. He came, he gave us prices. I did my due diligence. First time around, I went over my due diligence. If you want to go back through the RFP process, we can do it. It's gonna be about the most frustrating thing you've ever experienced because you're gonna get just what I've gotten. Everybody is still just as busy as they were.
Everybody's so busy, you can't hire a gym.
I mean, if you want to do it that way, just to make sure that it's fair and up on board, that's fine. It probably nothing will get done until next year. Because again, you're already in the middle of your building season.
Beth?
Uh, don't we have to use the ARPA money by the end of the year?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes.
You probably won't, but...
Okay, I'm just quite, I just, I wanted to make sure, clarify that.
I'm all right. If you throw an RFP out...
No, I just, I'm not saying we have to. I just, yeah, we need to make...
But you've been doing it for quite some time and you haven't been able to get them. And that's why we got lots of projects that we haven't gotten done.
Haven't gotten done.
We've at least gotten a little headway. We got the windows done at the community center. We got the library done, but they're just, everyone is over.
And the Forbay, the Forbay got done.
Right.
If it's not an emergency, my lead time for a plumber is two to three weeks. Only if it's emergency do I actually see results. I've got emergency lights to go in the police department over there that have been on docket since last year. And I had, I, I did get Sparky to come out, but I had an emergency. It was on a Sunday. I had a Packer that went wrong because we had a power surge flicker. And when the Packers are getting ready to start, they're three-phase fungus power suckers. And when they get ready to go, if there's a flicker in the power, they usually will pop one of the three fuses. You know, it's three-phase, so a fuse on each leg. And I got into, it was a Sunday, and I can tell you the bill's in that packet.
How'd you do it?
That hurt.
How'd you do it?
So, yeah, I mean, however you, you know, again, it makes no difference to me.
I know that I've had that twenty twenty-five date in my mind because I know that money does have to be spent.
I mean, which is why I kind of wanted to get to them and be like...
Get on their schedule.
Well, the other thing is, right, I have a relationship with them. I've had them do all this work for us where as if I go and say I do find a company and I go into it cold and they tell me, well, we're booked up until September, October. You know, you're going into cold weather time because that's the problem. At this point, you're, you're almost at the end of June. Most of your guys are tied in solid.
And you've already brought it up with them?
Yeah, because I've already brought up the salt shed needs repair. I've got some things on the town garages that, and I'm not gonna say like they're... It takes a little hounding to get...
It's not like they come running over with your first phone call.
About every company I deal with right now is that way because they are just swamped under with work. We're not, we are high priority, but we're not high priority because we're not a gazillion dollar job. But we are over years, we're pretty consistent with income for them. So it's not, about the only one that comes running when I call and I could call them in the morning and they'd be there in the afternoon is Casella. Don't ask me why. They hate my guts. I don't know why they would do that.
Got a big crew.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, you know what I think it is, is that because Meg mostly deals with them now, she got a much better personality than I do. So I think that's why they're so happy to come now. That Scott really good with that. They do, they've been really good about there.
Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, Scott is a facilities manager. He's done his due diligence. Unless you really think we gotta change it, I think that'll continue to let Scott do his thing and get it done.
Oh, I think we need to get it done by the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah. Go for it.
I'm giving it my best, Bill.
Okay, what else you got?
Uh... Told you about the Packer had its little spitting sputter. If there is any calls to, and I told you Stuart, but I'll tell the rest of the board. I believe Derek's already aware. If you get calls that there's somebody running around the dump with a shotgun, it's Meg. Meg's my bear deterrent.
Oh.
We are using rubber pellets and we also just got rubber batons. I have a sow that has triplets that, you know, she, she's, she is wary of the public, but... And I get it. She's got three cups she's trying to feed. She's persistent. Meg has tagged her twice in the butt. She got a yearling in the butt. It scares me a little bit to recommend her on the job. Worrying, you know, you're not supposed to be there shot tonight.
Are you saying you should just give her one or two shells at a time?
Yeah, so I might survive it. But you know, the nice thing about it is it goes to show, like, and the reason I brought it up is it's going to show to her character. I can tell her to do anything up there and she's game. I mean, her, it, it just kind of amazes me that her, how her skills continue to improve and that she never questions and just as she'll say, well, why do we do it this way? Okay, this is why. Oh, okay, I'll go take care of it. Uh, other than when it starts to make me look bad. Then I gotta pull it back a little bit. I'm supposed to be the boss. Hazard days, Saturday, June twenty-first, nine to one. Anybody that needs to get rid of stuff.
Nine to one?
That'd be the first one this year and then the second one's in the fall.
June twenty-first, Saturday?
Yeah.
This Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that'd be the twenty-first.
That's it. Hazard is wasted. What'd you say? Nine to?
Nine to one?
Nine to one, same as it's always been. Yeah, it's popping up.
We did have, I, I just forgot. I just remembered this because it happened on Wednesday and I went and met with them. Uh, we did have on the new town garage, on the door that has the man door in it, we had issues with that again. They came down, monkeyed with it, got it to go. I'm only gonna monkey with it so many more times and that overhead door is gonna go right over the bank and where, or the ski door is gonna go above by and I'm gonna have to put an over door. Because, you know, if you start paying for service call after service call after service call, it starts to get a little bit annoying. I, they say it's something to do with the eyes or whatever, but I'm gonna call up there so I can get their detailed report. So don't be surprised if you see in the next cycle.
Trevor?
I haven't called up to you yet, Scott, but it's not working again.
It's not working again. There you go.
There you go. Key door.
Okay.
All right.
I was gonna say, Scott, what about this? Uh, we got an applicant for a...
Yes, well, I, I assume you'll want to wait till the end. I don't know.
Well, I, I didn't know if we needed to do that in an executive session or if that was just something that Scott decides, maybe you can work with someone or keep the RFP out there or what?
Uh, no, I would like to bring on a part-timer sooner than later. I mean, Meg and I are making it work, but I won't say that weekends are kind of...
Well, we only had one applicant.
Yep, yep.
So, okay, can you wait a little bit? We'll get rid of some of the, a little bit of stuff.
I didn't think it needed it.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, it's personnel, so it should, but...
All right, good. We'll move on then and then we'll come back to this quick weekend here. Trevor, you got any?
He's not even on here. Oh, yeah, yes.
Well, it says it's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's all the paving. Yeah, no, we have, of course. That's, yeah, three, yeah, we're there.
We sent those last week. Yes.
Yeah, it's on six thirteen.
Are we doing paving first or?
Oh, paving is six sixteen. Paving and cover replacements is two things, right?
Yeah. French hollow cover.
So let's do the paving. Well, which over one you guys want to do first?
Paving came up first in that email. I don't know.
I mean, Hunter's here, I assume, for the cover.
He liked to know about the French hollow project.
So let's, let's knock that one out.
Okay.
Yes.
So we have the French hollow, French hollow cover project. We have a bid here from A.S. Clark and Sons. Um, you reviewed them. I've looked at them quickly. I believe they cover the same thing. Uh, A.S. Clark is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
For a concrete box?
Correct. And then, um, the Hunter's proposal is, um, for three hundred and thirty-five thousand or a pipe arch cover for two hundred and ninety thousand. So there are two choices on Hunter's.
So the last French hollow we did was a concrete box?
Correct. Um, I think you're gonna run into a timing issue with the concrete. My suggestion at this point would, would take Hunter's option two with a metal pipe.
I can get the box. That's why I have a premium price on it because I can get it.
Yeah, but you're forty some, forty some thousand dollars higher.
Well, that's how you get the box.
Right, right. No, I get that. I just, I mean, I mean...
So I'm not good on that.
I mean, can Clark get the box? They said they can because they said anticipated start will be nine one and completion by ten one.
I mean, I, I like concrete. It's easy, it's clean.
But it does say nine one by ten one.
And for eight thousand more at that point, I'm happy with that also.
Okay, what do you want to do? We got Clark at two ninety-eight with a concrete. We got Hunter at three thirty-five with a concrete or two ninety with a, uh, with a pipe arch cover. What's your opinion?
I mean, I like Clark, like Hunter. Both do good work for the town. Um...
Excellent. Lucky both of them.
Yes. I agree that we should go concrete if we can. Correct. That's what I've been hearing over and over again.
It's easy and it's clean.
So...
Where it's easy and clean for who? For who or me or, I mean?
Well, it's just, it's just, it's just a preference. It's just a, it's just a personal feel.
If they have the same lifespan.
So they do.
Oh, yeah. No, they're, like I said, they're...
It's less for the taxpayers and it'll last the same amount of time. There's, there's no like advantage of the concrete. Once it's in, it's easier to install and I'm the installer.
Just a second. Beth?
What is a pipe arch cover? I do not know what that is.
It's a, it's an aluminum plate cover that gets bolted together.
We're doing the same thing on the South Road. We did one a few years ago on Raspberry Hill.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know.
Like a million holes, but that's on them.
Yep, okay. Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, like I said, I mean, I look at it the other way, which we have done before also, is Hunter's taking the time out of his day to come.
Yeah, I'll get you a second minute. I'll get you a second.
So I, Hunter's concrete price, I, I don't, I don't think, I think it should come down to either Clark's concrete or Hunter's arch. And you're talking eight thousand dollars at that point. And Hunter has taken the time to come in to the meeting, which we've always put premise on that, that to take the time, speak volumes.
Clark couldn't be here tonight. Randy, you had something?
Well, what did, what's the state say? It doesn't matter for them, the state?
These are all within, these are all within specs of the state.
Well, what happens, Randy, is you, you get a hydraulic study on it and the state just gives you a water flow data of how much the minimum it has to flow. So what you put in for structure, they give you like two or three options to choose from.
So they're all within state guidelines?
Yeah, duck. Oh, that's weird.
Okay, so what's your pleasure? You, you've heard the three proposals.
Now hearing that the metal and the concrete are effectively the same, I would move to accept Hunter's bid at two ninety on the metal.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made to accept Hunter's bid at two hundred and ninety thousand. You gonna go get that done this year?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not, I, I know I'm being a little bit of a smart ass because, but we've got another one we gotta get done too. Um, so, uh, any other discussion? Motion made and seconded for Hunter at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a pipe arch cover. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Um, since we're on the Hunter's subject right now, I did have a conversation with Hunter the other day and you said sometime after July fourth, a week after probably, he's gonna start the South Road project. And I've asked him to put some signs up a week or two before, just warning him that the road's gonna be closed and what was your timeline on that?
Oh, for being closed?
Yeah, a week, so. But just to give you guys an update on that one, so that one will be wrapped up sort of then later.
So we should probably put that on Facebook too or, or your email list, your email list to notify people that...
Oh, you hit the website.
South Road.
Which we don't have on Facebook side.
Well, I don't know. I don't remember.
Police Department does. We do not.
Oh, this is back on?
It's, yes.
Yeah, because you touched it.
Well, I hit a plus button. I didn't know what that was.
Okay, so...
Recording.
So you're thinking the week of the seventh?
Yeah.
So I mean, I can get it with, with Derek and somebody and just put it on their Facebook page.
Well, we should put as much word out as we can so that people know.
Yep.
And we all have, we also have to notify two fire department and Keane and all because all of those. Yep, just in case.
Yep, absolutely. So...
Um, I think we ought to talk about one other subject real quick while Hunter's here because we did a pre-bid meeting on the access road, um, on Monday, I guess.
Yes.
Monday. And there's a cover that we planned on replacing, which if we do, is gonna turn into a major problem. With Hunter's advice and expertise, he said we'd have to build a road around it. Either that or the only other way, which I fought desperately against, but I think the only way that we would ever do that cover is to put stoplights on Lower Taylor Hill for the several day, would that be several days, Hunter, to do that one?
Yeah.
Would it have been any longer than that? People go both ways?
Would that have been any longer than that potentially?
Probably a week.
That's gonna open up...
You're saying make it a two-way?
I know it is.
Well, it's summer, so it's not as much of a nightmare.
But there's a lot of traffic goes up that road.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't, we can't run Lower Taylor Hill both ways. We can't run it, we can't run it two lane and just give it a free fall. It's not wide enough in most places. It will be chaos.
The bridge isn't, I don't think.
Well, it's a one-way bridge.
Yeah, the rest of the road.
Well, it's, it's mediocre because you're gonna have, you're gonna have some truck traffic. There's a lot of traffic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the trucks.
Yeah. You might want to go away that way.
Trucks might not even be able to do it.
If we do two shifts, it's possible to do it in a day.
Okay.
Right. But, okay, so just, just for, so when we did the study, I think six, seven years ago, their estimated car volume at that time is like thirty-seven hundred hours a day when I did their study. My concern is the truck traffic on that road because there are some spots that are tightened down through there. I don't know how you're gonna regulate that with them. And we're gonna be going into fall by the time we get the permits and stuff, so that's gonna be the peak of the season. Tour buses, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be, you're gonna be end of August before you break ground. It'll be my, in my far off, early, mid-September. And I just, I don't know, I don't know if the color tip because it's gonna be hard to retrain people. And where would you put the stoplights? Would be the next question. Because if you put them top and bottom, then you got people that live on the road that aren't gonna know which way the traffic's supposed to be going.
This is just for the cover replacement?
Just, just for one of the covers on the access road.
Which is, where is, where is?
It is just above Roberts Road, but below Morris's house. There's a big cover there.
No, no, just...
Where that washout area always goes.
Sort of. It wasn't, it wasn't involved with that washout. There's another cover above there, but we can go through Telephone Road or Stratton.
That's what I was thinking, but there's no way to do that because it's...
Not in that piece, but we had professional eyes on it that day and it's so deep, it cannot be done live.
What if, what if you did two shifts and people just for that one day? They just did Bikes Falls for the one day. Then you don't need traffic lights. You don't need to retrain people one day.
There's still gonna be people going up Lower Taylor Hill.
I mean, you gotta have shaves and then those guys working up there. I mean, it's just...
But it, it's a thought.
It happens.
But I just thought we had, I wanted to bring it up so we have, it hasn't been bid yet. Hunter was the only one that showed up to it. He's working his figures. So it's, it's just something, Scott?
On the thing of Bikes Falls, I think I'd reach out to Jamaica before I just went ahead and started the study because you don't know what condition that road's in.
Yeah, I, I know a part of it. There's one bridge I have to go across at about a mile and a half an hour because it's, it's got so many potholes in it.
Yeah, but I, I'm confused with what you're saying right now. I just want you to think of attending people to Jamaica and coming up.
That was, that was what Hunter recommended. That's a long ways. It's gonna be, that's gonna be real chaos.
I mean, that's, and it's...
But we don't have to make a decision on it tonight.
But it's just a conversation.
Hunter, when, when you give us a, when you give us a price, will you put that kind of separate?
Yeah.
And so that we can talk it over. But I thought we should bring it up here so that people can be thinking about it because July first is the day the bids are in. So we have to be somewhat prepared to talk about it so that you guys can think it over.
Well, our meeting is two days later.
One day later.
A one day later, the next day, that's the second.
But I just wanted to give you as much notice so we didn't throw this out there all at one time because if we do that cover, then it, it is going to be a major disruption. But there's no other way to do that. You could probably do the corner live, couldn't you?
It's gonna rest to me you could do one line, you think?
Right. But, but that one there just isn't possible now. So without building a three hundred thousand dollar bypass road around it, which...
No, I agree. I, I agree. It's gonna be, like I said at the pre-bid, it's not gonna be a fun project.
So anyways, I wanted to bring it up so that we have a chance to think about it. So we think of alternatives. There aren't an awful lot of alternatives. So anyways, let's move on. Um, Hunter?
Yeah.
You got projects for us to do?
Oh, yeah.
You better get to work.
Ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got?
Uh, we got the paving bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make, should we accept the Fuller bid?
Well, I was wondering, what is the one seventy-five square yard?
So what that is, Bill, is...
I know what it is, but what's the add-on?
Well, I'm gonna explain it to you. Just want to explain to the process of what it is. The blacktop now is twelve to fourteen inches thick. And for him to do a full depth reclaim like he's done on the access road, his machine only goes down about ten inches or so. So like he did on the access road, he might have to take off three or four inches. So that's what that equates to. And I ran the numbers. It's around thirty thousand. If, if it, he does have to go that route.
So he is still under...
We dealt with that before.
So he is still under the pipe?
Yeah, see, it comes out to seven, seven oh three is what my rough figures were. When you add in, it's thirty-two thousand and change.
So, so...
What's his bid, please?
Uh, Fuller is six seventy-one, one hundred.
And forty cents plus the coal plane of one seventy-five per square yard.
Estimated thirty thousand.
And Bikes is nine forty-eight, eight oh nine fifty. So, um, just to move this along, I have motion to accept Fuller's bid. We've had good experience with them. And he also the lowest bid.
Correct. Okay, motion was made and seconded for the Fuller bid.
I don't have a pies in yellow.
Is there any?
Oh, a pie.
I'm sorry. Please.
Can you just tell us what that's for?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
What, you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry. Old Town Road.
Old Town Road.
That's in Fuller and Problock again.
And Fuller's doing it all?
Yeah.
And what was the...
Six seventy-one, four hundred and change.
Was it with the caveat that he might have to, it's just on Old Town Road, the blacktop is so thick because that hasn't been done in since forever. And his machine, his Robert Taylor can only go down twenty. So he ends up taking off like two, three, four inches, whatever he finds. And we actually use the material for the shoulders and stuff and that does, it's a...
Savings, yeah.
It's a savings in a roundabout way, but it's, it kind of helps all the way around.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't sure what we're talking about.
No, no, you're, you're fine. I'm sorry.
Um, but yeah, so...
There was one question I got on the... There was one question I got on the pre-bid we did for the access road. Why did we lump the paving and the excavation together in one bid now?
They, we didn't. They were given separate. They're two separate things. They were the same day that the contractors were there and the pavers were there.
Okay.
The paving guys will submit.
Well, that's one reason Clark didn't come. He says, I, I'm not getting it.
We've always been, they've always been lumped together. Every single lumping that we've ever done has been the same way.
Yeah.
And people, and it says right in there that you can bid on whichever section you wanna bid on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz it's, it's.
Well, okay.
Cuz it's cuz some, well, cuz some of like the paving contractors have dirt guys, and they'll just take the whole project. Or vice versa, like Hunter, you know, somebody like him could just take the whole project and just sub out the paving if his paperwork wasn't big enough to do it. So.
Okay, all right.
Well, that was fun. No, not really. I mean, we're gonna start.
I'm sorry, did we pass that motion for Fuller?
I thought we did.
I think I, I made a motion, you seconded it.
Okay, we made the motion seconded to accept Fuller. I thought we accepted it, but all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I apologize if I.
I don't think we did, but the owl will tell us.
Yeah.
Ben?
I just have a request for the board with us, add a five-person board now, even though we don't have a five-person board yet. The access permits only have two lines on them, so we're gonna have to add another two lines for the signing of the board.
Okay.
Uh, the ones that I have in my file that are ongoing, we'll just sign underneath, you guys can or whatever.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you so much. I thought we'd get that done ahead of time.
Yep.
After having a conversation with Bill today, we're having a employee luncheon at the garage, July seventh?
Yeah, seventh.
Okay.
I've already ordered thirty pounds of ribs.
From the line that's gonna say hi.
It's not, I know.
Yeah, no, I just, and so we'll have the garage ready. The week of July thirtieth, you'll see them all are out. I'll be out doing our first couple cuts. And we'll take a week off, and then here we go.
Is it June or July for the?
The luncheon?
Yeah.
Uh, June seventh, uh, July seventh, I'm sorry.
July seventh.
July seventh.
Right, which means that the new, whoever the new select boards will be able to come up and meet everybody too, which is good.
But, we're plugging along. As you can see, we've got the real close signs up again on Old Town Road to do a couple more Wednesday. I try to squeeze three in. Seems to be a pretty good process doing them without hiring them out. You know, as recalcitrative shop, we can just move them around and stuff like that.
So, I did mention something else to Trevor today, and he said he thinks I'd get my head handed to me, but I'll bring it up just to ask, cuz. So, years ago, Bob Sager said to me, what the hell are you guys paving your roads for? And then you're locked into the two-minute material, and you're locked into oil prices. It costs so much. Is there any thought about going, ripping up and going back?
I think, I think we would, I think, I think.
Too hard on the machinery, equipment?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna find, we're gonna be maintaining it a lot more. Yes, it is expensive, but on the well, on the well-traveled roads like Winha, Hall, and Old Town Road and all that, I think we would have a great deal of, of.
I mean, I remember when I came up, thirty-eight, some odd years ago, it was, it was all dirt.
Yeah.
And, and actually, Tom Eddie pulled me out.
For getting. Well, I'm not.
Right before Alvin, right before Alvin Rose.
Scott?
I lived on Old Town Road when it was all dirt.
Yeah.
And I'm telling you, if you ever go back, dog.
Okay, this is what Trevor said, so I'm just checking.
I mean, there are some roads we have, we have not paved. I mean, like, we just, we just paved a road last year that we hadn't paved before, which was the steep way up into Signal Hill. Because you have one car goes up through, spins a hole, and then the next one spins a hole. And then we have to go up and grade it on a regular basis, and it's very difficult. Now, you've got a smooth path up there.
Right.
We, I think our goal is to pave the hilly sections where they dig a hole, and then dig another hole, and then it's a constant battle to keep.
I didn't wanna make a big deal, I just.
Well, it's all right, Bill.
I'm glad you got the answer.
I'm sure you are.
I think I will.
It's not happening.
I, I don't think.
But, other than that, we're moving. We're getting things done. I also am gonna ask for an executive session at the end for personnel.
Okay.
Just a little, I don't believe any of your decisions are just a.
All right. Good, I guess we'll sideline it for now then, and come back to you in a little bit. Sorry to have to do that. We got so many people, I don't wanna ask everybody to leave right now. Okay.
Yeah, let's get.
Uh, special town meeting, we're all set. Alec?
Uh, yeah, so, we've got our BCA meeting on Monday at eight AM, just a reminder for you guys. So, but, yeah, we're set. I've been doing absentee ballots, so just a reminder again, if anybody wants absentee ballots, they're welcome to get them. And then we're ten to seven downstairs on July first.
Eight o'clock on the twenty-third?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
I think we're good to go?
Yeah. So, you've got your help all lined up?
The what?
You've got your help all lined up for?
Well, that's the BCA meeting.
Well, no, I'm talking for the actual time that the polls are open. You have to have a certain number of people, but you're all set on that. You've got it all under control.
Yeah, so I got Scott, got Julie in. I did talk to Christie, she stopped in today on STR stuff, so I talked to her about it, so, and then I figured we'd kinda.
Okay.
You know, maybe between the BCA, do a couple people, do shifts and stuff like that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I can fill a shift too in the morning, if you need me.
Perfect, we will take you. Thank you, Julie.
Jerome Reynolds. How's that coming?
Yeah, we have this, you got that.
I saw that, yeah.
This is what needs to go out. It was just up for approval. The only issue is that there, yeah, so GovOS, you know, because of the delays in the contract, back and forth. And I guess is the contract in here now, is the pay order is in there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because of those delays in getting that back and forth and back and forth, we sort of were slow. Christie's moving forward, and she's even scheduled additional time with the GovOS personnel to try to get the thing up and running, but now they're saying it'll be up and running, you know, by the end of July, and we have currently.
Jesus, come on.
Well, we have currently a date of, you know, although they were saying the end of June, so Christie might be able to push them more. But, it does say, you know, that we're supposed to have our licenses on it before August thirty-first, so this is really imperative to get out, to let people know, to start getting their material together. And then, you know, Christie's gonna probably, I mean, I told her I would help as needed, but she's gonna get hit with a lot of processing all at once.
Yeah. She's, she's gonna be a heavy tasker.
No, she is, but we talked about it.
Well, we just have to get it started.
But if we get this out, that's gonna help, because this is telling people.
What form are we gonna send this in?
Oh, it's a little, it's not this big. It's the postcard.
Five by seven?
Yeah, it'll be shorter.
Am I gonna need a magnifying glass for it? I guess.
Is it that size?
We do it really good.
You have one in your phone.
It'll be like this size.
Okay.
What sizes?
Like this one, so.
Oh, oh, the, no, yeah, just like the cards that we got, and all the other handles.
Did Christie talk to you guys about the problem she's already having with people not being able to get their septic permits? zoning permits, whatever else is on that?
Yeah, I wrote, so I talked to Christie about that.
Okay.
And she, so, so, once, at one point she suggested that there be like, you know, like Lisha has a fee for compliance certificates, that we authorize Beth, you know, a fee for twenty-five dollars to pull the septic permits.
Does she wanna be involved in that?
I guess she's okay with that.
So, what I had told Christie is that I think if it takes an hour, it should be twenty-five dollars. If it takes longer than that, which it can, I know Al spent over an hour finding one today.
Wow.
Yesterday, I still.
Right. So, I think if it, I think each hour that it takes us to work on one person, it should be twenty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah, I, I, so, so my, so what the ordinance says, and what I responded to Tina Malone, who sent the email saying, what do we do? I replied and said, you hire a lawyer, or you hire a title searcher. Because we were not, I did not want it going on in our town.
I explained, I explained how hard you felt about that it was.
Right, so as much as, you know, and I don't think, you know, it's not the money part, I mean, you know, Beth's got sixteen other jobs.
But it's still, it's the time investments of having.
And so does Al, right?
Yeah, well, if you have six hundred of these people, we supposedly think, that's a lot of time.
Well, right now, so that's the other thing. On their first scraping, and I just don't think it's right, neither did Christie, but the first scraping said a hundred and fifty.
There's no way.
I, I, well, when you go online, you're getting Stratton and Winha, but I, I have to believe there's more than a hundred and fifty. When you look through.
Well, the problem is you've got some who have been doing it for a while. They aren't listing on, because they have contacts of people who are renting from them now, so they're going direct, and they're not.
Right, right. Well, they're gonna get the letter, and if they don't comply with it, then we find out about it, they're in a bigger problem. You know, it's ongoing violations. So, you know, it's like zoning, and it may be days of violation.
So, what are we gonna do about this with the?
So, I, I think we should, I, I don't think we should put more on any town official, Lissa, Beth, or Al.
Well, the problem is, they're gonna say, well, I can't come to the town office and look.
They can hire someone.
Then they're gonna have to hire somebody.
I said to her, call your closing attorney. Now, it could be that her closing attorney is retired or passed away. I mean, I've been here long enough.
Lawyers do do that.
I've been here long enough to see four or five people not practicing anymore.
Right.
Uh, but, you can hire a different attorney, or you can hire a title searcher. There are title searchers. And all they, and they know how to run the records. The only thought was, and I'm really surprised to hear that, cuz, cuz I did think, you know, Beth has an online database of the permits, and finding, once you know what the lot number is.
Well, sometimes you, you have to get the deed out, you have to look at all the previous owners, and the problem with the septic.
Oh, cuz you don't know who built it.
You don't know who built it, and sometimes when you go that far back, it's the builder that put in the permit, and you have, you don't even have that name.
Right, but you have it by lot block, and you have it by lot block.
No, no, Jared, no, it is so, because.
It's not the building permit, it's the septic permit.
Yeah, but sometimes you have to go into the septic to find us, or the zoning to find a septic permit, because you have to find the year. I mean, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, no, I've done it a lot. I've done it a lot. I didn't think, I guess there's always an exception, but most of them are pretty quick.
Uh, not many.
Anyway, that's.
Just, I just wanna give you guys a heads up. I'm willing to go there and spend more.
Well, the problem is, is this gonna be, throw a monkey wrench in the works here if we can't.
No, people have to get, that's what this thing is for. Get your, get all your paperwork together. There's a list of what you need, and so when this gets.
The problem is, if they bought a house, and it was built by three or four people before that that have owned it, then it's gonna be very difficult for them to get.
It won't be for, it wouldn't be for an attorney or a title searcher, I mean, except in an unusual case that you just ran into, but generally, that's not, it's not that difficult. It's not that they can do it themselves and mess up the town records. That would be another issue.
Yeah, I cannot have people in there fooling around.
No, that's what I said. You can't have, but you can have attorneys, but attorneys and title searchers that you know.
Yes, that's our problem.
That's where, that's where I think it needs to stay. That's what, that's what it said, is that if you.
Which is what our rules say, right?
It says it. If you need an engineer, hire an engineer. If you need an attorney, hire an attorney.
All right, so, so we've got Christie on, and she's dealing with go.
She's been, yeah, as you said, she's super on top of stuff and working.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
And you didn't put it right down, that's why I spoke out, sorry. So, on this postcard, does it tell the recipient of the postcard all the different things that are required, and what, to what extent they have to go to or expense to.
Well, it doesn't say what the expenses.
Directs you to the website.
So, the website has the short-term rental and the list of what's required, the checklist. There's a, there's a page of the checklist of what's required for your licensing that is on the website, and this directs you to it.
It says the short-term rental page on the Winha website currently.
It tells you what the license costs. It doesn't tell you.
But it tells you that you're responsible for any cost to get any of these.
Well, that's.
Well, I, I mean, I'm here, so I know that.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, if I did that document, I wouldn't presume that I had to do that. You know what I'm saying?
No, I don't know what you're saying, Teresa. Who would, who would you think would get you your pay? You have to provide specific list of.
So, it says that, that's fine.
It doesn't say you have to pay for it.
And, and it says it in the ordinance that you have to.
These are required.
You have to require these, but instead of trying to put, and how many pages was the ordinance?
It wasn't that long.
Not, not too many.
But I mean.
Probably like ten.
Okay, ten pages, and every, so that you can find and see a copy of the ordinance, okay? So, the people who.
I'm just saying, the average person may not understand that if they're across.
It's twelve pages.
Twelve pages.
That they are responsible, that's all I was saying.
Right, right. It's, it's not the town clerks do know.
That's my concern, and that's why, I mean, we do the specific, I'll tell you here.
You can set up a little side gig if you want, Derek.
Yeah, somebody certainly could. Yeah, somebody who knows what they're doing could.
The postcard also does let people know, which, we now have a timeline on, GovOS is gonna send those hundred and fifty known STRs that are actively listed somewhere that they just scraped. They're gonna get a letter with an activation.
They're gonna activate a password, an activation code and a password.
Just for that particular property.
Yeah.
So, this says, just so you, it says, and it bold and underlined, it says, "It is the responsibility of the licensee to hire lawyers, engineers, surveyors, or title searchers as necessary to obtain and provide the required application information, considering the volumes of documentation licenses not be above."
As long as it says it somewhere, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, it says, "Don't consume the time of the town clerk, the short-term rental administrator, although she's willing to put this on time, not to get their Winha town administrator, zoning administrator, or any other town employee to assist in providing the required application information or documentation that's outside the scope of their employment and responsibilities. Notwithstanding this, the short-term rental administrator is available to answer general questions of any licensee," and she's already been doing that.
And those are just getting forwarded straight to Christie, correct? Like, from you?
STR.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so Public Safety Facility Committee, which is to do with this.
This just has to get out and see if we get any responses. I would not be surprised if we get minimal, except maybe like, you know.
Hard to say.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Yeah, so, this, are you guys okay with this in a smaller form? At what, a five-by-seven?
It's totally, you, you just let me know what size you wanna tend about it.
It's the same size, it's the same size as the.
It's like half a booking.
No, this is, it's this.
Yes, exactly, thank you, and I mentioned it the other day. No, it's like.
This is eight and a half by eleven.
No, I'm talking the other.
Yes, so this is five, because that's half an inch less.
I think it was five by seven.
And then that's an inch and a half.
If you wanna do half page.
I don't, I don't think.
But I think this is the biggest you can go for postcard mailing.
I think that's fine. That's fine. That's the size we've been using for all the mailings. You had it so that it fit.
That is a, it's this size. It fits on an eight and a half by eleven, but it will, they'll take it and shrink it to fit on five by.
Well, they could, can they use some of both sides instead, and leave a place for?
No, the other side is the mailing address and the later.
Just mailing address?
Return address and mailing.
They do it through a machine.
Well, I know.
I don't think there's any problem with that. That size card is what we've been using for everything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You know.
All right, so do we need to approve that? Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think, I don't know that we, sure, we want to, sure, let's vote on it. I moved to authorize, listen to get the notice to Winha taxpayers and residents out regarding the short-term rental ordinance update and Public Safety Facility.
Now, is that being sent to just voters or to all property?
All residents, taxpayers and residents. Well, not just property owners, cuz some people live here, right?
Okay, all right, motion was made and seconded to get that done and sent out as soon as possible?
ASA.
Any other discussion? Scott?
Doctor, some, Scott.
What?
Me?
I saw you waving.
What?
I'm, I'm scanning, scanning by you now, Teresa. I'm sorry, I'll try to keep it.
I just wanted to know if you had had any further thoughts on, uh, what you want the committee to be comprised of? Or are you just gonna wait and see who comes in?
I think we'll wait and see.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, the last, on our last committee.
I'm denied, I wanna know why am I denied? You know what I'm saying?
Well, this says, said in a letter of interest outlining your qualifications to the town administrator.
Okay, so I didn't know it said that.
Well, you see, our last committee, we did not, we just, we just made a committee. So I don't know if we're just gonna make a committee, or we're putting this out to the whole, the whole town.
We're putting this out to everybody to see who, I'm sorry.
But when we did the housing committee, we just said, we have X number of people wanna be on the housing.
Well, there already were people that wanted to be.
So you didn't see.
Anybody else could still be on.
Anybody can join.
Anytime, right.
We're accepting members. If anybody else would like to research ways we can bring housing to Windhoe.
I'm like a de facto committee member on that. I keep track of it.
That's why I was wondering why you put that language on there for this, but you have it in the past. That's all I was saying.
Well, I, I think, well, you know, I think it's cause we're looking for people that maybe have some expertise, like your daughter, you know, somebody has expertise in buildings and planning.
But you didn't need expertise for the housing committee, though.
Yeah, cause the housing committee isn't.
We're just, we're.
Housing committee is, 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 it's, well, this also.
Isn't a specific project that we're gonna, that we have.
They're like investigating options.
Both advisory boards to the select board, though, right?
Right, but this board is act.
We don't have any decisions.
Right, I just wanna make sure that they're both the same type of committees.
They are. The, the difference between them is that the housing committee is sort of just doing investigating what theoretical options might be, although Julie's been to like a number of county-type meetings and other things. But, you know, whereas this committee has a project that it's real, it's going forward a hundred percent doing. That is like a possibility.
Not necessarily.
Well, we, we gotta.
We gotta do something.
Yeah, I mean, it's not necessarily at ten million dollars, it's not, but.
No, but that's.
We gotta figure out what to do. So that's what the committee's being formed for, to figure out like, how can we make it more cost-effective? No, thank you.
No, no, that's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll keep accepting you. I'll get you a little, can we get our flag so I don't mess it up?
I've got more than a flag, don't worry.
All right. Well, a good auctioneer doesn't even accept it.
They don't care, they just look at my eyes.
Exactly, I've been to them before. Okay, townwide reappraisal, it's still happening?
Yes.
Um, we don't have any update, is it still down over the mountain?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and it's still proposed to be done by the middle of twenty-six, correct?
Finished for the twenty-sixth year.
Yeah, okay, good.
Manchester just got theirs, I've been hearing some stuff.
They did? They did theirs, they already picked up there.
Also, Dorsey just did theirs and they got.
Oh, maybe it was Dorset.
Yeah, Dorset, cause Manchester did theirs like three years ago.
Okay, so then it was Dorset. I heard people.
There is a letter in there that we just got from the state in, towards the back of the information. Well, might be that.
I moved it off.
There you go.
Shuffling paper.
It was about the, uh, CLA and such that we are required now.
So it says where the Senate's saying that we have to reappraise, we know that, we're already in that thing. I think we're at, uh, the municipal CLA is, we're fifty-eight point nine four percent.
Right, and it drop below eighty and you're required.
You have to do it. We're in the process, we're, we're.
Right, and they know that, I'm not sure. That just must be an automatic letter of some kind, because they know we're in it. We got an exception for doing it immediately. We're in the process.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, I mean, it's a big.
Not enough appraisers in the state to do every town that got hit during.
New business. All right, what's this about zoning administr, administration appointment?
Oh, so I wanted to talk about that, that's why Tammy is here, did she see here still?
Yeah.
So that, the thing with that is that it's nothing that we appoint. The planning commission chair, as, as far as I know, historically, has been the overseer of the zoning administrator. So I, I think that's what you're looking for, it's someone to.
No, I, um, my handbook says the planning commission recommends an appointment for the select board to appoint the acting zoning administrator.
Well, it's not acting.
Yes, it is. That's what Marcel.
Marcel was acting zoning administrator.
Yeah.
Cause I don't remember ever appointing Marcel, but he did it for about forty years.
Well, yeah, you weren't here then. He was there, he was maybe thirty-eight years, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he was.
All right, so, so who, who did?
Tammy.
We, uh, we, um, recommended, the planning commission recommended Tami Blanchard.
Tammy Blanchard.
And are you okay with that, Tammy?
Just like, she hasn't got enough to do.
Right, that's fine.
Well, I feel like it's my civic responsibility at least.
Okay, good. Well, that's all we said. You came here, that's all.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, we came, you came here, we've accepted your application.
There you go.
I make a motion.
To appoint.
We're not gonna talk about it anymore, Tammy. Um, we have motion been made and seconded.
Yep, second.
To appoint Tammy Blanchard as the zoning.
Acting zoning administrator.
Acting zoning administrator, okay. Any other discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
We can give her a chance to get out of that.
There you go.
Thank you, Tammy, thanks for stepping up.
Swoop right in there.
What's this about Green Mountain National Forest monitoring programs?
It was in.
We got it in Leamout.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
They're asking for input.
It was.
We want my input.
You know, where was that? I did just see it a few minutes ago.
A boundary line adjustment with the pinnacle. And both Tami and I will be meeting with, um, a surveyor on that project. I forget what day.
Wait, is that, that's.
Okay, thank you for having me go back first, far enough.
Okay, so, so.
We are, I am, so it's Tami, we'll be there to monitor that when we come up. And it will be just like, um, a property line adjustment. The planning commission will hear it and approve it eventually.
So it's almost like a zoning board adjustment.
Question, comment, proposed change, yeah, here it is. And I wrote probably should be on the next agenda, cause, right? All right, it went to Beth, and Beth forwarded it.
So it's in progress, do we have to do anything about it at this time?
The select board does not.
Okay, so let us know if, if you need.
Okay, just so you understand, I, I think Lucius is talking about something different.
Okay, why don't you?
Cause this says, the USDA Forest Service is proposing changes to the monitoring programs for both the Green Mountain.
She's talking about a subdivision.
Yeah. She's talking about, yeah, the pinnacle, which is.
But this is, yes.
I don't know about this one.
That, that's why I was reading it.
That's mine, too.
The USDA Forest Service is proposing changes to the monitoring programs for both the Green Mountain National Forest and Finger Lakes National Forest located in Vermont and New York, respectively. The purpose of our monitoring programs is to provide in chapter four of each forest lands and resource manager plan of the forest plan. The proposed changes are specific to monitoring questions designed for us to better understand how well management activities are meeting forest plan direction. We invite you to comment to help us improve the questions, which will be the basis for each forest monitoring program. Deadline for submitting comments is July seventh of twenty twenty-five. So we have another meeting before this. Uh, and then it says, please refer to the attached letter for how to submit comments and additional information regarding the proposed changes. And we also refer to our planning website, and there's a link to the FSUSDA.
And it's got all the planning, all their documents.
So we'll have to read up on it and see if we can comment. All right.
Is it only the select board that gets to comment?
I, I would say, no, I think anybody can.
Or the private citizen can comment?
Well, if you have a comment, we will relay it for sure, so.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that they can, I don't think they can to throttle it down so that just more.
Do you want me to forward this to you?
Yeah, forward that to me. I got a lot of comments for the Forest Service.
Well, this is a specific area, but I'll, I'll send it to, I'm sending it to the transfer at Windhoe.org.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
All right, all right, move on, administrator.
And the attachments are in it, and the link, and the link is in it, sorry, the link is in it.
Do we have any access permits?
No, we do not, thank you for asking.
Yeah, um, so postcard to taxpayers and residents, that's off there. Um, is the accounts payable, I think, is that a, is that an executive?
It's a debt, yeah, debt. I, I mean, my main question after I went over the budget.
She's downstairs doing, texting her.
Come on in.
Well.
Oh, you can see her if she is? Okay.
Um, so you gave us the financials at the last meeting and I didn't go through them until I got home. But we are one point eight six nine million dollars over budget. It, according to this, what is that? And how do we pay for it?
Let me go get my financials, I didn't know that we're talking about that to me.
Oh, I just, it was on the, so.
Wow, I, I, I think this is.
I don't think it's.
I don't think it's.
Let, let's say it come back with the information.
Yeah, well, when you, I, I think that that's to do with how we do the accounts payable thing, just.
The agenda item is about accounts payable.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We'll come back to that.
I'll come, I'll come back to you when you answer it.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Um, do we have anything else here?
The personnel.
Policies.
I went through, I, I will be honest. No, this is just.
You have to approve those in, in opening session.
So this all that I found, and I had to ask Lisa, cause I looked at the current one. And this one, and the only difference really that I saw reading through it was that this was out of it. The drug and alcohol that only, policy that only has to do with the CDL drivers. So that has been pulled out of the personnel policies. And there are a few differences about time sheets and things like that.
Okay.
But there's nothing.
Nothing really of substance that has changed.
I didn't see any.
So move to accept the personal policy as presented, is that right?
Yeah, I'll second.
Good.
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, the time sheets, can I just ask what that is?
It is, hold on, I'll find it.
Thank you, just cause we don't get to read whatever you guys are deciding.
Well, this is just for employees.
Yeah, I know, but so just curious.
It's mostly, that one really is specific to how you submit them, like, oh, they have to be electronically submitted. And it leaves the room for that time, electronic timekeeping that we may start to do with highway. So, um, that's.
Oh, you know, there's another thing in personnel, it'll go in executive session, personnel regarding Christie.
Yes, I was, I noted that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so you, you were asking about hours of service and time sheets? Beth?
I'm sorry.
You're asking about time sheets?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. It says, "All employees are required to submit bi-weekly time sheets via digital means, recording hours, work, time taken off, and tasks completed during that period. All employees must complete their own time sheet using electronic means. Supervisors are not permitted to complete time sheets on behalf of this ordinance." That is one paragraph of the time sheets. The rest of it has to do with working hours of the police department, regular hours for the highway crew, uh, town officers, road company, to one, blah, blah, blah.
That's okay, I just wanted to know what the changes were, Stuart.
Right, now, I, I think we should, and I don't know that, maybe, maybe we don't wanna vote on the policy yet, I, I mean.
I mean, we already have one in place, so, like I said, the main difference, and the other one is on the website. Um, so the main difference is that we pulled out what doesn't affect.
We pulled the, the drug testing for the average person, unless they're driving CDL equipment.
Right.
Right, which is, um.
We really should probably be updating our personnel policy every couple of years, and it's been like four, so.
Scott.
So just a question on the, the drug testing on the CDL. Now, like myself, I have a CDL license, I don't drive town equipment. I'd go if I had to. Do I get excluded from the drug testing?
I would say if you're, you're a regular scope, personally, I would say your regular scope of duties do not include driving a town truck, then I would say that you're excluded. That would be personally. Now, if it starts to be a problem, we can change that.
So our current policy.
Uh, that, that would be my reading on that, doesn't mean that I'm correct, but, but that would be my call.
So this is how it reads, Scott, that as a town employee, you are prohibited from working or presenting yourself for work while under the influence or severe after effects of illegal drugs, controlled substances, and/or alcohol. This policy is designed to promote our goal of providing a safe, healthy, and productive work environment. This policy call, covers all employees, including drivers and other employees who are subject to drug testing programs performed in accordance with the Federal Department of Transportation, the DOT requirements. So that is pulled out now.
Everyone asks how I made it twenty-five years.
It was the drugs and alcohol, wasn't it? All right.
Stuart, I just have one question.
Yes.
I was kicking this can down further down the road. On the hours of service and stuff, I believe we're tied plus of sixteen hours a day.
Unless it's an emergency by like.
So my question is, is who makes that determination that it's an emergency?
Well, it's made by present, federal, like.
So we have to walk the federal, so if we have like a snowstorm of.
If you don't, you, you, by law, by labor laws, you have to give people breaks.
I understand labor laws, but the conversation we've had in the past, it's coming three inches an hour. You take two hours off, you gotta miss. So my question is, is who makes that fund, is there's.
You, by law, you have to take time off to sleep. Like, so sixteen hours a day, you have to pay.
What I'm just trying to clarify, so we don't get into this pickle during the alert times, cause there's times we push sixteen hours, we might have to go home for five.
Well, there, there's also times when we have extreme cold weather for extended periods of time. The government releases the propane drivers and the oil truck drivers from that requirement because they know they can't keep up. So they take that off if need be.
I'm just looking for clarification, who makes that decision? If we can just do it in-house and still be okay with it, cause I just.
Yeah.
When are some tougher out there?
Oh, it is, it can be, I mean, you know, if we're in the middle of an ice storm that lasts twelve, fourteen hours in a party, so.
I'm just curious, that's all, I just.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I can answer that. I guess we just have to do the best we can and we'll, we'll back you.
That's, that's what I was looking for, right there, Stuart.
That's, that's, I mean, you, you gotta give the guys a chance to sleep.
Absolutely.
For some, and, and when they get to a point, you just have, and whatever it is, they have to say, okay, go home for five.
Well, you just said service to place, right? It's the board backs.
I, I, I will back you if I'm here. Huh? What's that, Scott? Okay, all right, we, we also had, something came up about the, about the marijuana board. I assume that's what cured you.
Oh, 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 yeah, we got that CV.
But you're gonna, did it, what, Caesar, no?
No, no, it came up about Kevin.
Well, okay, so, so are we gonna vote this through, or are we gonna pull it apart, or?
I mean, who else wants to go through it? Because I have, so if y'all.
I, I made a motion to.
I'm an employee, vote it through.
I made a motion to approve it.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Yeah.
To approve the personal policy.
The updated personnel policies dated, they will be effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
It'll be up on the website.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that. I would say it, I don't know.
You, you get better.
Okay, um, so do we wanna hit that now about the, the, about the marijuana thing?
Yeah, the note from Kevin. Yeah, I'm just not sure what you're looking for, Kevin, because we don't have a lot to say. We have no objection. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, um.
I mean, we don't have any saying.
Have you, they, has the cannabis control board sent a letter to the town?
Well, the, the way we, when, when we got this stuff, it appeared we didn't have to do anything.
I don't think you do.
On May twentieth.
Being said.
On May twentieth, they just sent us a notice saying that.
You're gonna, you're gonna say.
The renewal is up, it's been approved.
Yeah.
They sent me a message today saying they were, it was the only outstanding item. I, I don't, I'm not certain, because they don't copy me on what they sent.
They didn't ask us for it.
They didn't ask us for a, a letter of approval. Uh, so, so that's why we didn't do anything. It didn't say, oh, we would like a letter from you with the town's blessing of this, but we didn't get that. So if, if you are within your permit, your permitted rights, I don't think we had anything to do.
It, it didn't read that we have any, like, that the state is the, like, any, that we don't have any thing to do with it unless there is an issue.
Develop, sorry to interrupt you. I, I think what some communities, some control boards, local control commissions, excuse me, have developed sets of bylaws. They've evolved things. Essex is regulating, I mean, they, you know, right, right. I don't want to take that, but right, perfect example, your reaction, you understand. Um, they're much tighter community.
So basically, you have your permits in process, in, in place, and they're all valid, and the state has not said anything, so should we ask Lisa to write a letter to the cannabis control board supervisors that you're within compliance?
The select board has no objection to the licensure of Peak Folia LLC.
And we have not, there has not been anything outside of the permitted activities that we are aware of.
Okay, so, did, did we, did we make that a motion? I know I asked Lisa to do it, but I didn't give her the word. You, you, you can fill in that legal jargon. So I'll make that a motion that we send a letter to the cannabis control people.
Right, I think I just said, didn't I just say stating?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Stating that we have no objection to the licensure of Peak Folia LLC, DBA Peak Folia.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll get that thing care of. Sorry about that. I, I just didn't think we had to do it.
Yeah, we did get something in May, but it didn't tell us, and the link that they have in here for guidance for municipalities clicks to a Chrome browser. I use a lot of browsers. I don't use Chrome. It doesn't open.
And it's probably two years old anyway, and it really tells, I think it would tell you if you have the opportunity to do more.
Chief, you give anything?
Uh, just.
Executive session.
The executive session?
Yeah.
That is part of that.
Um, the drug and alcohol policy for CDL drivers needs to be actually adopted by you guys, because it's a standalone policy.
The second policy.
The second policy in the personnel.
Oh, that is here, over here. I'm sorry, you skipped CDL drug and alcohol testing.
Here's the, it's the same, that's the same as it.
As it was.
It's been, except I did update it based on the twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five revision that passive, our VLCT, they put out a drug and alcohol policy.
So, uh, did you want to move to accept the drug and alcohol testing policy for employees?
For CDL employees.
CDL, yeah.
Yes.
For commercial motor vehicle operators.
Yes, that we adopt the drug and alcohol testing policy for our commercial vehicles.
Okay, motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, what else? So we've got several things that we want to do executive session, or we got to.
Should I, I seconded it, is that what happened? You made the motion and I seconded it?
I, yeah.
Did you second?
We made a motion.
You also have a, sorry, did you?
Go ahead.
I was unsure what happened.
Did you, thank you for asking.
Did you staff motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you also have a COLA sheet.
Yeah.
That is inside the vanilla envelope.
Yeah, is that gonna be?
That first page, we, it normally is not, um, but.
What is COLA?
Well, we can talk it over.
COLA is two point eight right now, and so I've added, um, I've rounded to three, and I added a one percent since it's been two years since you've given anybody a merit across the board. So it's, would be a four percent for employees.
So my only question is, can this wait until the board is a full board?
It would start July one, so it would be the next payroll, so I think.
Do we, uh, yeah, I mean, it seems like we should wait till we have the full board and put it through two weeks late, because we had to delay.
Then I have to retroactively pay everybody, that's a bit of a payroll nightmare.
I'm sorry, what's that?
You're all going to do that, only been two years since we had interned a lady.
That is not true for you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it isn't for me, but for the rest of my time.
And that is not true for the rest of your staff.
What did we get beyond the COLA?
No, I'm talking about your current staff.
Oh, yes, you're correct, Julie. My apologies. I'm old and my brain is filled with ketchup.
They say the first thing that goes to mind, but I can't remember. So, okay.
Oh, you know what?
So what are we gonna do?
I mean, we're looking at a wage, annual wage increase across the board of fifty-eight thousand dollars. I don't have a problem approving this right now, but I do. I think personally, I think we should do the CPI at three percent and then hold off on merit-based until we can do everybody's evaluation. We haven't done it.
It's been a long time.
In a very, very long time, and I think we need to look at merit-based increases specifically by employee. That's my.
Right, it's taken a long time since you've done.
There's one person in there that I brought up for you to look at, um, just to bring stuff, to bring up to a kind of a common rate, um, that seems to be fairly standard, so he would be more than the one percent merit.
But that's not in these numbers?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is in these numbers. So, so you have, let's motion to approve the employee wage.
The three percent COLA increase.
Right.
Um, by July first, and then, yeah.
Starting July, starting July first.
And then we will do merit-based.
Evaluations.
Evaluations, and tie the merit-based raise to the evaluations.
Okay.
I, that is what I, that is my motion.
I'd second that.
There was a motion made and seconded to do the three percent COL, uh, CPI raise, and any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we're not signing this the way it's written?
Well, you can just run a line through the one percent merit, because there's a whole nother line.
There you go.
Let's see if I did the right line. I just crossed something.
The totals, the totals. The totals will be off, but that's a.
You guys didn't get anything.
I got a question.
Just other time.
Do you have a day?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about.
How's the, uh, the breakdown gonna be? Is that supervisors evaluating their subordinates and then you guys?
You, yeah, because we only evaluate the managers.
Yeah.
I mean, and if you decide your department, you want to do one percent merit-based for everybody, then that would be.
It comes out of yours, but that's.
My personal.
Yes, I just saw that watching.
Maybe get nine percent. We can, pretty cool, because I've already done mine, but I mean, that was a while ago. So we can just get new evaluation forms and.
Yeah, yeah, well, we got it.
For you, personally, for you?
Yeah.
Yes, I can.
Done mine way back.
We'll have to start over.
I can email those.
Okay. All right.
Great.
So do we need to go into executive session now, or do we have other business that we have to do? That, we have several people who want executive session.
We have like three different executives.
Are you even gonna talk about the accounts payable?
Oh, yeah, what, what Deb was.
Because you kind of skipped over that one, like.
Well, we, 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 the question came up about what, some information that, that Julie saw, and then Debbie wanted to get some information, but I think that's. You gonna sign that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Gotcha. Uh, I, I thought Deb was coming back upstairs. Oh, she is, here she is.
So I have the answer to Julie's. We, we are over budget, but we have more revenue than we expected, so that's even more revenue, you know?
Okay.
We are over budget, but we, our revenue is up.
So we're not as much.
Okay, so the accounts payable, is that gonna be an executive session decision about, or executive decision discussion? Because the way the accounts payable is done now, it, we're, they, we're proposing a change to. So do we need to discuss that in executive session, or do we do it here? About who gets the information to.
Oh, 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 I, I thought that was executive session, because it involves salaries and personnel, yes. That's one of our.
At your June fourth meeting, you were gonna invite Deb, I've got my notes, you were gonna invite Deb to come and have a discussion publicly about it.
That's, that's why.
So that's, is that what this, this cop is, what happens to you now?
I believe that that's what, one of the things.
So it's personnel and, it's personnel and fine, and cut people's contracts, so we discuss that in executive session, and then we come out and make the decision publicly.
Yeah, I know how this works, but I, that was, I'm just telling you, what you said at your June fourth meeting was that you were gonna invite Deb to come and have a discussion.
Correct, that's.
Right, but the discussion, yes, it's like four executive sessions we have to have, right?
I think Trevor wants one, Scott wants one, Derek wants one, and actually Debbie wants one.
So four, I was right.
Right.
Are they all personnel?
They're all personnel contracts.
It's all personnel related.
Okay.
I understand that. Are you coming back out?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we gotta come out and say what the decisions are.
Or, or no decision.
Even though Debbie's not, she, as treasurer, she's not contract. Just, I'm just clarifying that for anybody that might not know.
Right, right, but it involves the contract personnel right now. There's somebody dealing with this that.
Are you gonna talk about anything else when you come back, or are you done? But your decisions possibly, but you're not doing anything else, right?
I don't see anything else that we're going to.
We just have to do the bills.
Bills and law.
And why not something else then, because I'm.
Sure.
So, at the last meeting, there was a long discussion about permits for storage containers and how unsightly they were, so I'm gonna bring up something else that has bothered me since then, which is, um, the town being unsightly. We have a beautification.
The what, the what?
No, it's dispend, I was the beautification committee. I did everything by myself.
Yeah, but I didn't hear what Teresa's.
So it's no longer there.
Okay, so, um, okay, so.
I don't think she finished.
No, I know.
I didn't hear the question.
Well, she hasn't finished.
I'm trying to get it out, Bill.
Yes, please.
Give me one second. So, I'm just saying that, um, in the budget, there is money for the beautification committee. There has been money spent for the beautification committee. I don't see any beautification going on. Um, I thought it had been subbed out when the beautification committee ceased to exist as a body. Um, so can you just update me on what that status is?
So apparently, there was a miscommunication between Lisa and Homestead. Their contract went out and got caught in the mix of delayed and all those things. It's now back on board. That's why we don't have, you're talking about like all the planters aren't filled with plows, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That, Homestead takes care of all that, but they didn't have a signed contract from us. They're now, that's in the process.
And we'll try again and most everything got that.
I, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I mean, I just know.
We, we, we didn't.
And just so you know, Julie, I'm well aware of the beautification committee. My father-in-law started it, so I'm totally, totally that, just seeing.
No, no, and I would love to be a part of it, but I did it by myself. I planted those planters.
You should see the people that were doing it before you. They could hardly walk, Julie. I totally get it. So, I'm just saying, I know it's in the budget, and, and it's even increased for next year, starting July one, so it just concerned me to see.
Well, that's what happened. It was a contract, it was very simple. The, the contract went out, didn't get presented and signed, now it's going out, and everything's gonna, everything's gonna get beautiful again.
Now there is a contract.
Yes, it's all gonna get beautiful.
Or there will be shortly.
For some reason, Homestead didn't work without, wouldn't work without getting paid.
Well, because, you know, it's not like we can spend someone else's money, and I didn't hear back.
No, it's very good. It was just a miscommunication.
Well, I think we'll turn it out to the zoning administration department.
Yeah. Thank you. Deb needs another thing to do.
What's that?
That would be perfectly fine.
I said that when she was talking, so she didn't hear it.
Let's just keep going.
All right, so are we, do we want to review the bills now, or do we want to? And, and so the only thing that comes out a, after executive session will be if we made any decisions. Because we can't, we can't vote on it in executive session. We can talk about it.
Right.
And go from there. So how do you want to handle it?
I, I don't care, so you're the chair.
Alex.
Uh, I would appreciate if you guys knock those bills out.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's knock the bills out, yes.
Thank you for speaking up.
What I look for.
This way you can start.
Transfer and every department. So that first one, Stuart, is for the board. Board has to like look at that and then soon decide how they want to go, because that's, that's not in the payroll yet. It is to reimburse the fire department for.
Because we put a down payment on the equipment before we had it all squared away. But we got reimbursed for it. But we got reimbursed for it.
So we, we actually need to, to vote on this before we do anything?
Correct, yeah.
So let's, you want to have a motion to reimburse the fire.
This was to do.
But let, let Julie look at it first. And we can, well, we can make the motion to reimburse, then we can discuss it. So I moved to reimburse the fire department the twenty-five, the twenty-five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
I second.
Now we can discuss it.
Motion's made and seconded to.
Tell us what it's about.
To, we, when we got, when we were applying for the grant, we had to, we had to put down a deposit. We put, the fire department put down.
It's for the sleds and the ATV.
Correct, and, and the town was reimbursed for it all in full. So this isn't coming out of town. It, we got reimbursed for it. So this was to get the reimbursement to the fire department. So if there's no other questions on that, I would uh, ask the question. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
But that needs to be added, isn't it?
I'm gonna do it right now, yeah.
They're all over it. Well, um, hey, Lisa?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. I, I just wasn't sure if it's anything we needed to do with this, but I see it's.
Oh, I think it was his notes to me.
Yeah, okay. Nothing to do.
Oh, my gosh.
Guess I gave you guys bigger files than I got.
Well, we.
What, what is this? Cell phone reimbursement times thirteen. Doesn't go through our own, we don't pay for it.
It's not payroll. It's, they, the, some of the supervisors have cell phones that we reimburse them for to carry all the time. And it's not, it's not the town doesn't buy the cell phone and give it to them, because it's, they're like supervisors of, um, the officers, supervising officers that have to be like on call.
Oh, that's what I'm asking, is though we provide, everybody else has a town cell phone.
Not everybody else.
Well, I know.
Our guys have always been given the option of having a town cell phone or being reimbursed for a portion of it for having that on call.
Oh, so what's times thirteen?
It's pay periods, so half a year.
Thanks, glad you guys know this. Somebody knows what's going on.
Deb, what's the reserve one, did that one need to come back down to the twenty-five hundred?
Where did the CDL go to?
No, all of a sudden.
That's yours. That goes in that plan. I don't have it. It's in there somewhere.
And listen, their contract said by check.
Did it say, I didn't see that, but we're gonna give them a check.
Okay, it did say that, yeah.
I don't know what's attached to.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, when they're an electronic.
I know, everything is electronic. Maybe the fire department.
I'm sorry, what? They probably have cash.
Talk to Deb about where the.
I'll check it before we process.
Okay.
They're busy, busy. Ah, the elevators, I guess it's a much better company, according to Scott, but this.
Well, they just did, didn't they just do a big service on the elevator shop?
Yeah, scrape and paint, fit, and. Clean.
Any feedback on the cleaning? Everybody happy?
Everybody is now, so Renata has taken back over pretty much, um, doing some buildings herself, and she has some new staff that she cares about the job. So it's been really good. Every place I've walked into has that nice fresh mental to it, that everything looks good. I haven't looked for anyone from anybody. Um, so I think we're back.
The bathrooms are absolutely spotless.
Hey, Lisa?
Yeah, definitely.
That was a, uh, that's a legal matter.
Oh, you can see.
Yeah.
How'd you know what I was looking at?
Because I can see it.
Okay.
I don't, we can't talk about it over.
Okay, it's an open records request.
I'm putting that, that's yours.
Okay, you want this one, which way do you want to go?
All right, we have both seen.
We have both seen both of these.
So it's up to you now.
You both saw both of these?
Yes.
The heck did that happen?
Well, you've just been, just been stalking.
Nice, okay.
Think you were talking while you were looking.
Yeah, I was talking when I should have been listening, but that's not.
Yeah, that's not a. Oh, yeah, this is a great one. Bennington County, they.
That's what I said you'd be happy with.
They, they know where we are when they're getting ready to send us a bill for fifty-five thousand dollars.
Is that for the court?
Yeah.
Just hold on, you've seen that, right?
Yes, this one.
What's Sunny Hill Road?
Down off Kimbleville. It's a private road that you ask the authorities, so they send us a check, then we go down, we just sign up.
Okay, okay, I just. Hey, really, he, this thing with your compactor wasn't that bad. You, they treated us pretty good.
Yeah, he's pretty good, probably.
Yeah, he, he treated us real good. All right, Paul, come out, get in the air, watch that.
That's what the doctor said. That's what the doctor said, you know that? Nice. Mama came to the doctor's house.
Yeah, yeah, he's.
That's what.
I used to charge that when I was a doctor too. Okay, have you guys?
I haven't seen that one.
Do you have seen this one?
Uh-uh, that's the one that Bill was holding costume.
Yeah, he was talking.
That's how I, that's how I wrote. That's right. There you go. So here's this one. I'm not behind it.
Now I am.
Okay, so when Julie gets done with that and we vote on the bills, that'll get Alex happy. And then we're gonna have a, hopefully it won't be too long a meeting, but assuming you'll have four.
Two minutes also.
See them, there they are.
And make a motion that.
It's four, I believe.
Minutes from June 4th.
Mm-hmm. Motion was made and seconded from the minutes from June 4th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You know, some of the techniques were not listed in those minutes, just you know.
They weren't?
Was that, was that?
Randy wasn't listed in those minutes?
It says here Dean Giannotti Jr., Jeff Yates, Randy and Teresa Evans.
Okay, the next one's not those, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's those.
That's the last minutes.
I debunked that one.
You corrected them, thank you.
Alright, so it was another meeting, well, from previous meeting? Okay, we'll check on. So you need these.
The minutes, yeah. Take those.
In what order, what you have, the executive, that's it.
Um, who do you want to do first?
Okay.
Alright, we got Trevor, we got Derek, we've got Scott, and we got, who else was, who was the fourth one?
Deb.
Scott and Debbie.
I would, I would probably start with Derek, right? Cause he gotta go do police work and protect us.
I knew that was coming. I knew, I, I wasn't gonna touch that.
Should've just bought beer and go. You gotta get out there and protect us, that's right.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
Follow-up to the contract. Did, I've never heard any dimension getting a contract.
On the truck?
On, no, on the truck, no, still haven't heard that. But on the beautification committee for Homestead.
Yes.
Do you have a contract?
Yes, yes.
But that's when it mentioned it means so.
Well, I, I, I.
Okay, so, so you approve the contract now?
It was, it was approved before that, it just didn't get executed. So, so we didn't have to vote on it, it was one of those. It just had to be reset.
I just didn't remember coming up to any of the meetings.
No, it just had to be reset.
It's a renewed, yeah, renewed.
Yeah, it's renewed for, I think, three years.
So that's why it didn't.
Tammy said yesterday it's one year, and I suggested that, I don't understand why we don't do it for a couple of years like we do with the mowing and everything, cause it's.
I was understanding.
There you go, Alex. So motion, you've seen the bills?
Yes.
Everybody else having the bills? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye. You got it.
Cool.
Thank you guys. Alright, so now we're going to executive session. And I guess we, so you.
I'm gonna go first.
Well, okay, thank, thank you, Scott. Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Okay. So I would.
Hold on, please.
You have time for the owl.
I do have time for the owl.
Well, owl probably better than me.
Well, it's different.
No.
It takes everything and you do a synopsis.
It's okay, Lucia, don't worry about it.
It's not a veteran, it's a different.
I'm sure they are. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion. We came out of executive session, we had five different things to talk about regarding personnel issues. I would.
I thought it was four.
It was five.
It was five. I would like to make a motion to accept amendment to Derek's contract.
Okay, let's not mention it, let's go. Alright, got it.
Dealing with notice and contract negotiations.
You, you made a motion, I'll second the motion. Any discussion, Bill?
That, I am all in favor.
Okay, so.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion for Derek's clarification of contract? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Then the second meeting we had was with Traveller.
Traveller?
Trevor dried in. It was personnel issues, no decisions were made.
Okay.
Um, our third executive session was with Scott Bashi, facilities manager and transfer station manager. And we, I would like to make a motion that we hire Brian Fitzgivens to work as a part-time transfer station attendant for no more than 23 hours a week.
You wanna? You, you wanna second that, sir?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to hire Brian Fitzgivens, who was the only submitted applicant for up to 23 hours a week. And that was, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, then, we discussed our short-term rental administrator will have some weeks that they work a lot of hours, some weeks not as many. It is a part-time position. And we will start paying them 23 hours a week as weekly pay through the end of the year. While we still.
Track the time.
Track the time.
Right, and we reconcile it as needed after that, yes.
So I would make a motion that we change the STR administrator to a 23-hour-a-week pay period. Pay.
Salary.
Yes.
With, with time tracking, yes.
Motion was made.
Is it per week or per payment?
Per week.
It's per week with time tracking.
23 hours.
Go ahead, Randy.
What was it before?
It was.
What was it put out as?
It was put out as part-time, which is 23 hours, so there's no benefits involved in it. But the problem is that as this gets up and running, she's gonna have 40 hours in a week and.
And then some weeks.
And, and some weeks she might go less.
Once you get it up and running.
It's gonna be a lot less. So that's why we're saying keep track of your time and we'll reconcile it out later. But, you know, we didn't want, we, we can't have her go over 23 hours.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
We can't, we can't technically.
Yeah.
But she's willing to work the overtime in the thing to keep track of it from week to week. So we get this thing going and then.
And we'll balance it out.
And up till the end of the year. And then hopefully, the majority of it will be under control.
We have no idea, so we just wanna be fair.
I don't think Maricel had the, how much time it was gonna take either.
Well, in a sense he did, cause he had it as a full-time position, but $65,000 a year. And I just, I mean, that doesn't seem like that's necessary. It certainly won't be that.
Once we get it going.
Once the whole thing's up and running, I find it really hard to believe.
The, the first six or eight months are gonna be the toughest.
So did we make a motion?
You made the motion and seconded.
Yes, the motion was made and seconded to go have the short-term rental administrator on a salary of 23 hours per week until the end of the year.
Right, with time tracking reconciliation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the final was with our town treasurer. And so the town treasurer is taking over the pay orders. So the bill pay and tracking will now be done by, will now be done again by the town treasurer.
Which, which is for clarification, in case you're wondering.
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable. So for clarification, just so you understand, so what happened was Kate had always, that was always part of her job, was accounts payable. But Kate would not provide us with any financials of any kind whatsoever.
You, you saw that, right?
So, so Deb is giving us financials at almost every meeting and it's great. But back when I was on with Bob Oaks and Lisa had come on.
You should, you should.
But, I just want, I just wanna explain to them.
I know, you're still on camera.
That's okay.
So, go ahead, keep going.
Just saying, so we had, we had requested that Lisa duplicate all of that work. So that we would actually be able to have some financials.
Right.
And then now, we just don't need to do that anymore, because Deb is doing the job that Kate should've been doing at the time. It is what it is. Kate was great.
I may not be able to answer this, so I apologize that in advance. But, so is she going to be compensated for doing that additional duty? Okay.
Do we have that in the motion?
I made a motion.
We did the motion.
I, I think you start, I just want to pass that.
But I said, I thought you said the motion.
I did, but I didn't know if I have to do, did you accept it?
I thought I seconded it.
You seconded it.
I think I won before.
I don't need to mention the pay, do I?
Motion? No.
We don't do compensation on public record.
Just a minute, Randy.
Okay, so you're taking this, you're taking something, not away from Lisa, but you're relieving her of that responsibility.